Okay, welcome everyone that's joined us here in council chambers for a meeting of Pecosin City Council. This is Monday, December 14th. And could all please rise so we can give you the invitation and pledge allegiance.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and for the many blessings we have received as a city in this past year. As we head into a new year, keep us ever mindful of those in this holiday season who needed either a helping hand or just a neighbor that we have overlooked in some way. Help us all to reach out to those around us, all of our neighbors and all of our friends, and all of those hurting in any way. As we deliberate the issues before us this evening, we ask for your guidance, as always, and a special blessing this holiday season for our military, especially those serving in foreign lands, and for our public safety officials as they protect all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we get started this evening, council, I'd like to make sure everybody's okay. I know that we're expecting Mr. Bill Thomas from Hampton, really Dr. Bill Thomas from Hampton University. I don't think he's joined us yet. When he does come, I do plan on letting him do his presentation he has called ahead and we're certainly want to hear from him. So we'll do that when he arrives. Other special presentations, we'll start with the audit presentation. And Mr. Belot of the firm of Cherry, Beckett, and Holland have done the audit on the city of Pecosin. And as always, we look forward to your report.
Thank you, Mayor Hunt, members of the council, Madam Clerk, Mr. Wheeler. Thanks for having me tonight. In addition to the formal audit report itself, I have some comments that I'm required to make about the conduct of the examination. First and foremost, of course, we were engaged to audit the financial statements of not only the city, but the school board and the Economic Development Authority. Additionally, we audit the city's major federal programs for compliance with laws, regulations, and grant agreements that go on, and in accordance with the Auditor of Public Accounts of the Commonwealth of Virginia's specifications for audits of cities, counties, and towns. So having said all that, first and foremost, the audit opinions are unmodified or a clean opinion. Our opinions this year do contain an emphasis of a matter paragraph, and that has to do with the implementation of technical standards, GASB statements number 68 and 71, which have to do with pension accounting, financial and reporting for pension costs. For the first time ever, the liability for the pension plan has been brought onto your full accrual or government-wide financial statements. We noted no matters of noncompliance with the federal laws and regulations that are required to audit in accordance with the Office of Management and Budget, as required by Statement A133 or Single Audit, as you may know it. Financial statements require management to make estimates. Examples of estimates are allowance for uncollectible accounts, the pension liability, other posted employment benefits, or the group health insurance to retirees. During this past year, we proposed no audit adjustments, nor were there any uncorrected misstatements that we passed over. There was no disagreements with management having to do with our audit scope or accounting principles that are applied. We had no difficulties in performing the audit this year, and we're not aware of any consultations with other accounting firms which be akin to gaining a second opinion. Cherry Beckett is, was, still remains independent. Independence is an important part of what we do. We are somewhat a public watchdog to overlook these financial statements and to provide assurance that those statements are fairly presented in accordance with the accounting standards that they have them. All existing accounting principles in the statements have been consistently applied throughout the year, except for the change required by the pension accounting. Going forward, there are a few that you'll be looking at for the fiscal year that year, and there is a Statement Number 72 that deals with the fair value measurement of assets and liabilities that we'll be dealing with in your statements. A year after that, there'll be some new footnote disclosures that have to do with tax rebates and the type of programs you have and the magnitude and volume of those. And lastly, in 2018, the GASB decided they put their, your net pension liability on the financial statement. Well, guess what? The OPEB liability will be coming on your statements in fiscal 2018. I'd like to take a moment on Cherry Beckett to express our thanks to the Finance Department of the city of Pecosin in getting through this effort. I know they have their regular jobs in addition to a team of auditors running around looking at things that happened six, eight, 10 months ago and asking questions about it. If there's any questions, that concludes my formal comments.
Counselor. I don't think we have any questions, but let me, on behalf of council, let me thank you for the services that you provide and basically the independent look at our finances. I think it's vital. It basically is, as I've said for many, many years, the important thing about being able to govern is trusting the numbers. And when we can trust those numbers, we can make decisions, because you can normally resolve just about anything, as long as you know what you're really dealing with. Your audit of our finances is important to us, and I, you know, even came up there several times, and your team is so professional and so well-meaning. So we really appreciate the time that you've provided to us, and as well, we appreciate the findings.
Well, I wish you all a happy holiday and a prosperous new year then.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Next item is the introduction of new employees. And Randy, I'll let you do the honors here.
Members of council, I hope that we have two. The first, if she's here, is Rebecca Wymer from the library. Rebecca, are you here? Didn't see her, so we'll move on.
We'll move.
I'm pleased to introduce a very professional and cleaned-up-looking Mike Snap, who spends his days working very hard, been in some very dirty places, and I'm glad to have you here, Mike, and he's going to introduce our newest employee, Chad.
Mr. Mayor, I'd say the council would like to introduce Chad Kajerik to the Utilities Department.
Okay.
Sir.
Tell us about yourself.
Well, sir, I just recently retired from the Navy in August.
Okay.
Twenty-six years went by pretty fast. So since then, I was looking for a job, and I know Mike personally, so I found out this job was opening up, so I applied for it, went through the process, and here I am, glad to be here, glad to serve this fine city. I met a couple of people earlier. I look forward to meeting everyone else a little bit further in the future. I know you guys are very busy tonight. My wife is, I think, third, fourth generation from the city of Pecosin.
Great.
So recently got married last summer, so living here off of pasture road, so glad to be here.
Hey, we look forward to working with you. You're going to find Pecosin a very different place, and we don't, you know, don't do all that Navy stuff. So you'll be working on the CHT system that we have here in the city of Pecosin, so.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. But looking forward to your service.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Right.
Okay. And the last special presentation for the evening, I'd like to introduce Jessica Wood, who will come up, and she would like to make a short presentation on the city's new website, which is still, and we're still making improvements to it and refinements, but it's a significant change. And Jessica and a team of employees under the general other duties as assigned that you often get in the city of Pecosin. Jessica works in our finance department when she's not, also doing a whole bunch with our website and social media. And she led the team, and she'll introduce her team members, the ones that are here, and walk us briefly through this new tool. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to thank you guys for the opportunity to do this quick introduction to our new website. This went live in mid-November, and I wanted to thank the committee that worked on this. I don't know that anybody's here, but it was Amy Blow from the library, Gretchen Gokanauer from Community Recreation, Krista Corbett from the Fire Department, Vicki Diggs from the City Manager's Office, and Joe C., whose last name I always butcher, from Schools, and he was our IT person. So here on the screen, you'll see our new site. At the top here, we have our "Pecosin is the Place" symbol along with our name. From anywhere on the website, you can click on this "Pecosin is the Place" symbol, and it's going to bring you right back to the homepage. So that, along with these menus here, show up on every single page. These menus have all the information you can link to everywhere on the website. The departments are all listed here, as well as contact information for each department. And you'll also notice that under the "How do I?" section, we have a small area right now that we are working on expanding of where people can report issues, things like streetlight outages, garbage problems, recycling issues, so. And also, under the Government section, under the, let me scroll down here. Well, there it is, City Council. On the council page, there is a link to view the archived council meetings to YouTube, and then we are currently testing the ability to do the live streaming on YouTube, so we hope to have that fixed up here shortly. As you scroll down the page, you will notice that we have a Citizen Service Center where people can check for employment, pay bills, see the budget, and go on our GIS. Underneath there, we have a few quick links and calendars. The thing that this website offers us that was not available under the last website we had that I'm personally very excited about is the ability to do a notify-me. If you'll see up at the upper right-hand corner, there's my picture. I'm logged in as me, and this gives me the ability to sign in. I signed in using Facebook, but you can use Yahoo. You can just put in your information manually and create an account. Now, you certainly do not have to create an account. You can just browse the webpage, but by signing in, you have the ability, if you go to the notify-me section, you can sign up to receive emails. And I don't know if you can tell, but like I have signed up for, to receive emails for construction alerts, there's a little green checkbox next to the area. One thing that we really like about it as well is we have set up a calendar for recycling. So I live on the Blue Recycling Route, so I have signed up for the Blue Recycling Calendar. So every Thursday, I get an email, well, not every Thursday, every other Thursday, I get an email reminding me to put out my recycling for Friday morning. There's also a Red Recycling Calendar, and if you go to the Solid Waste page, if you don't know what color route you are, there's a listing on there with the colors, so you can sign up for your appropriate calendar. So that's really all I have to share, unless anybody has any questions, but I wanted to thank you guys once again for the opportunity, and we appreciate it.
Counselor, any questions?
This is great.
Very nice.
Thank you for the work.
Thank you.
Other jobs as a sign doesn't, you know, sometimes goes unnoticed, and, you know, now that we know this, that you can do this much good things, you know.
I'm sorry, I didn't mention, we hired a firm. It wasn't done, I didn't HTML it or anything like that.
No good deed goes unpunished, so, you know, we'll probably be counting on you for more. But no, thank you seriously for this work. And it's definitely been a long time coming, and we really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. That's everything that I see, you did not show up yet. Okay. We'll move forward to the audience for visitors. I'll remind everybody that we do have a public hearing this evening. If you're here to talk on the conditional use permit section, I would ask that you hold those comments until that portion of the meeting. And Eevee, you brought me this one sheet. Is this an audience for visitors?
That will also be for visitors.
Okay. All right. So if there's somebody that wants to address council on another, any other issue other than that public hearing, now is that time. Seeing none, I'll close the audience for visitors and ask council for consideration of the minutes.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt the minutes of the regular session of November 9th, 2015.
Second. A motion made in second that we adopt the minutes of the meeting of November 9th. Questions or comments, changes? Seeing none, Judy?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay. And the next item on the agenda is public hearings, and the first item, or the only item under public hearings, is an ordinance amending the zoning ordinance to require a conditional use permit for high-traffic generating uses in the General Commercial District. And Randy, who's going to present?
Mrs. Bass will present. She'll summarize the proposal in front of you as remanded by the city council, recap the planning commission's consideration and their recommendation with regard. Council members will note that the language pursuant to the proposed change recommended by the planning commission is in the staff report, should you wish to incorporate it. And for those watching us at home, I don't know if at some point we'll put it up, but there's almost always a question about where is General Commercial, and rather than try to simply explain where it is sort of in the ether, there is a map about halfway through your package on this item. The GC properties are the ones in purple. Thank you, Mrs. Bass.
You did an excellent job. I can go sit down now, thank you.
Not getting away that easy.
Anyway, I thought I'd try. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Mr. Wheeler summarized where we're at right now with this ordinance at your request from your November 9th meeting. If you remember that evening on, you had asked or remanded back to the planning commission, or excuse me, you had asked staff to look into creating an ordinance language that would basically require a conditional use permit for certain uses that were constructed or were established along the, or in the GC district. Please keep in mind that the GC district is located on the north side of Victory Boulevard and extends westward from the Kentucky Taco Hut to City Hall Avenue. It's the northeast portion of the Big Woods. However, when that district was first created back in the mid-'90s, the uses that were allowed in the district were based on the uses that we presently allow along with Creek Road, which is the B-2 district corridor. That is our general commercial corridor with some scattered B-2 located along our waterfronts. When we were tasked by city council to develop the ordinance language, what we did from a staff level is we looked at the existing uses in the B-2 district, those uses that are permitted by right and do not require a conditional use permit. This B-2 district is categorized in two separate areas. You have those, or divided in two separate areas where you have uses as permitted by right and then uses that require a conditional use permit. We, of course, focused on the uses that were permitted by right. And before you this evening, in the ordinance, is a list of those uses that you guys looked at in your November meeting, kind of blessed it, and we moved it through the planning commission at their meeting last Monday night. The planning commission is recommending approval of this list, excuse me, which includes requiring a conditional use permit for certain retail uses such as grocery stores, discount stores, variety stores, excuse me, and shopping centers, medical facilities such as hospitals and trauma centers, governmental office buildings such as libraries this building, as well as museums. You always do this, thank you.
It's an exciting subject, isn't it?
I know. It's been wonderful. Excuse me, recreational uses, which would include indoor/outdoor theaters, exercise facilities, bowling alleys, skating rings, and things of that nature, and restaurants with drive-through facilities. The planning commission agreed with this list. However, and in addition, they proposed that you consider amending the list to include one other section which would require a conditional use permit for any use located in the GC district that generated 75 vehicle trips or more per hour. This would capture maybe some of the activities that's not listed in this ordinance this evening. And a great example of that, and Kevin and I were talking about it today, is that you have two sit-down restaurants. One is a small hometown restaurant compared to maybe like Outback with high-traffic turnover. So with the planning commission's recommended change, it would capture the Outback-style use where it's not covered in this list here. And it's very difficult to create a list that's going to cover every potential establishment that ever comes to the city. So that was the purpose of this recommendation from the planning commission, and other than that, they were in agreement with what you had asked for them to look at, so.
Okay.
I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I just wanted, for just general reference, the 75 traffics per hour, can, I mean, what does like Farm Fresh or McDonald's or, what do they generate? Because the number by itself doesn't mean a lot to me without something to kind of compare to. Do you have any idea?
Well, those type of uses are already covered in this list.
Well, I know, I'm just wanting to know 75.
Well, I don't know exactly.
What 75 mean, I think is what you're.
It essentially means one vehicle slightly less than every two minutes for an hour.
Right.
Well, I can do the arithmetic.
Beyond that.
Do we have a comparison?
An equivalent.
Yeah, an example. Like, does Wendy's create some number, or?
We didn't do a traffic study.
We'd have to go back and pull out the old.
So I mean, we don't even have an estimate to compare to?
Yeah.
Okay.
I had two questions, Debbie. One, on December 2, Cherry's, and that was the 75 trips per hour, an industry standard of some kind. And the other one was, how much additional cost are we putting on potential businesses that might want to come into the city that don't exist here now? Do you have any idea how much the additional cost would be for them to start a new business? And I think also the credit unions in the general commercial district, is it not?
It is.
Yes, sir, it is. That's a number, it's hard for me to say, but I would venture that a traffic study that's, you know, provided by a professional engineer, depending on the depth of the study, but for our purposes, I think it would be between $5,000 and $10,000.
That's a lot. So we might be pricing somebody out of even thinking about it.
It could be for smaller-type uses. For, you know, new users or new uses, it could certainly have an impact on it.
And who would, you know, I'm thinking about the traffic study. Do you get the 75? Who provides us with the number 75? And is, do you come up with a 75? Let's say we're talking about the credit union, you know, they're only open a certain number of hours in a day. Are they going to divide their number of traffic visits by 24 hours in a day, or do they divide it by the number of hours that they're open?
Speed during their operation hours with emphasis on the peak hours of operation.
Okay, that's how you come up with that number 75?
Yeah. I think it basically, as I recall in the notes here, basically says during peak hour. Is that correct? And it could be any way, but I'll remind council that that's something that we would have to insert, because what's advertised does not include that.
Right, right, but I think that's a good, I think it's a good idea. I'm just, this is just a lot of government.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, you could save Debbie from having to speak to this because she can't talk.
For the first time, huh? I'm back.
You know, one of my first questions in the hearing about the proposed revision was, do you have to do a traffic study to decide if you need to do a traffic study?
Yeah.
You know, and there is a, there is a national standards book that Kevin got out, and we walked through different kinds of businesses. So there's a, there's a national standards book that projects traffic by types of business and size of business, and so the first thing we would do if something was close, we'd go to the standards book to see if we thought it would reasonably qualify, rather than requiring a study to determine if a study was required.
So you can use that number and not require the traffic study?
No, ma'am. I wasn't clear. To determine whether or not there would be sufficient vehicle traffic to trigger the 75.
Okay.
It'll say, you know, a small restaurant is this much traffic per thousand square feet at peak hour. I'm not explaining it very well, but there is a, there is a, there's a standard.
Standard. Book on that.
So for a small business, they might be able to use those standards and determine that they don't have to do the traffic study?
We would work with them to determine if they had to or not. If it triggered, then the answer would be yes.
Is this a more restrictive requirement than our neighboring communities have as far as requiring that traffic study? You know, we're in competition with every other locality around us to attract business, and if we have one more thing that's not quite as convenient and supportive of business, that puts us one step further behind. We already don't have the kind of industrial parks and developed areas where we say, here's the infrastructure, everything, all you got to do is put your building here and you're ready to go. So I'm just concerned it may be one more thing that's going to cause us to not be able to attract businesses.
I talked to a development lawyer yesterday, and I can't give you the names, but he said that just about all surrounding localities have something very, very similar to this.
Something similar to that.
Yeah.
That's good to know.
Wayne, do you know about other localities nearby that have similar ordinances to this?
I do not.
Do you know, do you know any that don't? Or you don't know one way or the other?
I haven't checked any of the surrounding, I haven't checked the county. You can use Hampton to see what they have.
And you don't know either, Carrie?
No, we didn't get into the details of who does or who doesn't. He just made a general statement that most surrounding communities have a similar type requirement.
Something you can determine by simply going online. Every one of these jurisdictions have their zoning ordinance online. You could check it out fairly quickly if they do have those types of things. Only, not expressing an opinion one way or the other, the only thing that, if I would point out to you, says, are any other use projected to results in 75, who's going to project it? Because the applicant's not going to project it.
That was my question. I have my own.
Means somebody's got to project it, which means then it's going to fall back on the city to project whether or not the city thinks, and then it goes back and says, okay, we project more than 75, so now you have to do a study, because nobody in their right mind is going to come up and say, well, we're going to have 100, you know, vehicle tractions every hour.
Any other questions? Of Debbie.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. This is a public hearing, so I'm going to open that public hearing and ask for speakers. I do have some people that have signed up, and once we get through those, then we'll open the floor up to see if there's anyone else. And again, this public hearing is only to address this particular ordinance, so just try and stay aligned in your comments to this particular ordinance. All right, first speaker I've got is Alan Moody.
Name's Alan Moody, 207A Brown's Neck Road. First of all, Merry Christmas, happy to hear you all. I'm sure this will be the last time we meet this way this year, as I'm, I think the 28th will be canceled. First, I'd like to address some of the concerns that I heard some of the council members speak of. First, I'd like to address some of the concerns that I heard some of the council members speak of. First, one thing to remember that this land is high-dollar land over there. So I don't think a small business is going to try to move in and be affected by a $5,000 to $10,000 traffic study. And if they are, in my opinion, that's the cost of doing business. One thing we have to remember as residents here, while we are competing to get businesses in here, we only have a two-lane road in and out of here. We can't put something over there that is going to generate so much traffic that it's going to clog everything up. Because then businesses aren't going to want to build there. Because if they can't get their people in and out of the business, then they're not going to want to have a business there either. So it's kind of the cart before the horse, which one do you want to do? The road obviously needs to be improved, but it's not on the docket by Virginia to improve it. So we're kind of at a standoff there with that. As far as this ordinance goes, it's not going to stop business. Yes, it may possibly add an expense to them. I would ask that y'all vote yes to the ordinance. Whether or not you want to accept a 75 or not from the Planning Commission, I do know that that number came from, from what I understood, an expert that's on the Planning Commission. That's his job as traffic engineering, from what I've gathered. Very knowledgeable, speaks way beyond what I can comprehend as far as traffic goes. He, but that's where he got that number from, from knowing the ins and outs of the business. This whole issue, we all know, started with the development that's going across the street. The, this ordinance is not aimed at stopping any one development. But the development trying to go across the street, CRESS, did address and did show us that there was a problem. You can't address a problem until you know it exists. Now we know that there's a problem, that somebody can go over there and build without planning, city council, or the citizens having any say-so in it at all. And it could muck up traffic over there even more than it already is on Victory Boulevard. So this ordinance does address that. It does give the planning, city council, and us a chance to speak to it, a chance to address traffic concerns. And while possibly adding an expense, I think it's one well warranted so that we can assure that we still have a safe passage and a low stress as possible getting in and out of here. I would also like to ask you to use every tool in your tool bag. I would ask that not only do you vote yes to this tonight, I would ask that you forego a second reading of this bill at your next council meeting, allowing this to become law 30 days after you vote yes today. While we're not trying to stop any development, there's no reason for it to go unchecked for any longer than it has to. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next speaker is Mark Andrews.
Good evening. Thank you for letting me speak before you tonight. My name's Mark Andrews. I work, I live at Seven Martha Court. Before I go into my prepared speech, I've heard numerous times about small business. Let me just give you a little example. My family's been developing real estate for 30-plus years. Two acres here in downtown Pecosin, $200,000 an acre, that's $400,000. It's going to cost you about $2.53 a square foot to put in an asphalt parking lot, another $300 a square foot to build a building. You're in at about three-quarters of a million dollars. A $5,000, $10,000 traffic impact study, it's not going to make or break that project. We're not talking small business like Mom and Dad want to open up a comic book store in a 2,000-square-foot space over here in the shopping center. What we're talking about are projects that impact the city. And with that, let me, because that's partly in my speech. Over the past three months or so, the majority of the citizens of Pecosin have become united in their concern for the future development of their city. For some, it has been an issue of anti-growth. For some, it has been an anti-Walmart issue. And for some, still, such as myself, it's been an issue of managed growth. During my most recent speech to the Planning Commission, I made the statement, things are changing. And they are, they always will. But we can't allow change to happen simply for the sake of change. We need to see change coming, and we need to plan for that change. And planning for that change is what led to the adoption of the Comprehensive Plan, a plan to help manage change by laying the foundation for the future vision of growth for the city of Pecosin. Pecosin is one of the more desirable places to live in the Tidewater region due to its schools and moderate-to-upper-income lifestyle. These attributes draw people who desire a small-town feel, making the city a bedroom community for surrounding employment centers. Prudent development is paramount to continuing this upward socioeconomic trend. The city has designated the Big Woods area north of Victory Boulevard as the gateway entrance into the city. And that development within this district should require a village design of premier upscale retail and commercial uses. However, one of the biggest impediments to commercial development is the enormous cost of improving infrastructure. Employees, customers, suppliers, and merchandisers must be able to easily, economically, and safely reach their final destination and at a reasonable cost. Any inadequate or overburdened transportation system will only deter economic development. Most of the city's major collector streets have been realizing increased traffic volumes over the years and are substandard to handle present and future traffic loads. In particular, Victory Boulevard is already under strain due to current traffic impacts, even prior to developing this specific area. Because of the lack of any near-term, or as of today even long-term plans for improving Victory Boulevard, it is imperative you begin thinking about increasing the value of our investment in Big Woods by considering ways to finance the widening of Victory Boulevard. The ordinance before you is one step in that direction since it will allow the city council final review of any project with the potential to impact both the city and its citizens. It will allow for the potential to have developers contribute to the infrastructure improvements or even deny the development due to negative impacts that the project may pose to the city. As I stated earlier, our future is changing. You need to see the change is coming and put in place the measures to protect the Comprehensive Plan, ensure the continual enhancement of our city, and maintain those endearing characteristics that make Pecosin the pride of its citizens. Therefore, I respectfully request you make a motion to dispense with the second reading of the ordinance and vote approval tonight as written. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Jana Andrews?
My name's Jana Andrews. I live at Seven Martha Court. Just doesn't have to do with the ordinance, but I just wanted to say fantastic, beyond fantastic website, and to those who worked on it, thank you. We meet again at last. I'm here tonight to ask you to please pass the ordinance before you I sent with the recommendations of the Planning Commission. It's vitally important to do what should have been done in 2008 when the Comprehensive Plan was adopted, and what the state of Virginia has suggested in their state code jurisdictions do, which is create ordinances to give legislative bodies review over development with large impacts on their city. While some current development owners in the city seem very concerned about this ordinance, I would point out, as Debbie Vess said, that this ordinance applies just to the general commercial district on Victory Boulevard and not with Creek Road. However, as members of the Planning Commission have stated in some of their work sessions, and I agree, we need a similar ordinance for all of Pecosin because the Comprehensive Plan doesn't just apply to Victory Boulevard. And large development, which can greatly impact the city through many aspects, can happen in other places than Victory Boulevard. But I think it's also important to tackle and solve this problem that the city has realized they now have, one step at a time. And I think this is an excellent first step. You can't stop change anymore than you can stop the suns from setting. This ordinance doesn't stop development. It is to give you, our city council, and elected officials that represent the citizens, the ability to make sure the change happens in such a way that the character of Pecosin, which has earned us safest and best place to live in Virginia year after year, is still maintained. So I'm not as good as Alan at talking off the cuff, but I wanted to say some things based on the conversation you had. At one of the Planning Commission meetings, Kevin did look into other jurisdictions, and he can probably speak on that, I don't have my notes from that meeting, about other jurisdictions' R-size and what kind of size requirements they have that would drive a development to city council. I think he looked at Winchester, I don't remember what all of them were. But almost every jurisdiction had a size trigger, which is not in this ordinance, which was any development over a certain size required a conditional use permit. It had to go before city council. In talking to Mr. Trant, who's on the EDA, he's a development lawyer, we had a conversation, and he said many jurisdictions, although we haven't looked into this, have not only a size trigger, but a traffic trigger. Because you can have something that's really small, you know, under your size trigger, but generates a lot of traffic, like a drive-through. So many jurisdictions have both a size trigger and a traffic trigger that requires that development to require a conditional use permit. And the whole point of that is because developments that either are extremely large or have a lot of traffic have a great impact on a city, and therefore those jurisdictions want their city council to review those developments. And that's the purpose for them. And I think is what, you know, was the citizens' driving force in this ordinance. I would hate to see this ordinance not passed tonight because of the concern of cost of a traffic study. So just thinking off the top of my head, I would say if that's a concern for you, would it be possible, I think it would be possible, to pass the ordinance requiring a conditional use permit, but maybe not require the traffic study and leave that up to you when you approve the conditional use permit, whether to determine if you want a traffic study, depending on the development that's come before you for the conditional use permit? Maybe that would be an option if that's a concern. Although, like many have said, that's a big area. And the likelihood of somebody going in there that's not putting in a million-dollar development, that that, you know, would probably not be a cost concern for them. It would just be a cost of doing business. It's my understanding that there is usually a second reading of an ordinance before it's passed. But I also have been told that you can also, by city employees, that you can choose to waive that second reading. Given that this ordinance came about as a request of citizens and has been talked about at almost every city meeting since the end of August, I don't see any need to further delay in passing the ordinance or a need for a second reading. If you do feel like you need a second reading, then I would ask that you have that in December so that this ordinance can pass before the end of the year. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Have Susan Legan or Legan? I don't know which way.
Legan, for Inslee Circle. I really don't have anything to add. The former speakers all said everything that I agree with. I just want to say that the Planning Commission, the EDA, and you city council members have been working hard since, I don't know, probably before August, but August is when I came in on all of this. And so I agree with everything that you guys have said and the speakers have said. So I would encourage you to vote yes tonight and pass this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay, and Betty Dean?
Betty Dean, Six Regans Court. I spent at least two hours Googling information about Walmart. I didn't count the number of negative articles about Walmart. But I can say that the negative articles far outweighed the very few positive articles about the so-called advantages or benefits of Walmart. And to save time, I didn't include the names of the organization that wrote this information that I'll quickly present. Studies from all over the country show that Walmart's arrival does not bring the increase in jobs and retail spending that the company promises. Instead, Walmart captures spending from existing stores, driving them out of business. Walmart's entry into a new market has a strongly negative effect on existing retailers, retailers. Supermarkets and discount variety stores are the most adversely affected. Stores near the new Walmart are at increased risk of going out of business. According to another study, for every two jobs Walmart creates, three local jobs are destroyed. Last comment, when Walmart moves in, small businesses and jobs move out. And obviously, traffic would increase after Walmart moved in. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that's everybody who signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to speak on this topic? Yes, ma'am. Just let us know your name and address.
My name's Terry Gooding, and I'm from 77 Bunting Lane. And I spoke at the Planning Commission also and in support of this ordinance. And I've been around for 40 years, and I've seen progress to where the Big Woods used to be where Foodline is, and the Big Woods used to be where Farm Fresh is. There were no stoplights. And, you know, we've made some progress, and I think that's great. We brought in some small businesses, and that's one concern I have, is if we let industrial centers enter in. And I understand we need tax revenues. But if we let them come in, we're losing all of those who have supported Pecosin for years and years and years. And I hate to see that happen. The traffic issue, again, all you have to do is look at Victory Boulevard and Jefferson Avenue. And that was very poor planning on traffic with that. So we have to make sure that we hold our integrity as a small town. That's why I moved here, because it was out of town. I worked in Newport News, and I wanted to get away from that at that time. And I think we're going to really lose out if we lose our small-town ideology. And we're going to lose a lot of people, I'm afraid, also. I moved my parents in from California out here because I knew that they'd be safe and that they'd have the convenience of everything around. But I really feel like we can really be threatened by external companies coming in and taking away our small-town integrity. So I hope that you'll support that ordinance, and we'll keep track of that as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? If not, I'll close the public hearing and ask council for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt an ordinance, amend the zoning ordinance by revising Article Roman numeral 11.1, General Commercial District, Section 11.1-2, permitted uses.
Second. Motion made in second, that we approve the ordinance, and that would be the ordinance as written, no amendments.
Disposal of the second reading?
Yeah. You want to amend your motion? All right, you got that one in the second?
Did you want to agree with his?
Yes. Okay. All right. One thing that I'm going to want to make sure, because we owe it to staff to make sure that they enforce this properly, and that is council's intent, I'm assuming council's intent is to apply this zoning ordinance as it applies directly to that development across the street. In other words, we're not going to say, well, we did that. What staff needs to know is, are we expecting them to enforce this for that particular development?
In G2, right, CG, rather.
Yes.
Can you make it retroactive? Because they've made an offer on property. Essentially, what you're saying is it's going to be retroactive.
That's basically what I think staff is looking for guidance on.
Can we legally do that?
I don't think we can. I think that's a...
What does an offer...
Better be sure of.
What does an offer include?
That's not vested rights.
Say again?
An offer is not sufficient to establish vested rights.
That's what I thought.
There may be a dispute in this case as to whether or not their rights are vested since they have gone further than simply making an offer. But there is statutory guidance as to what constitutes a vested right. And I would say to you, it's not perfectly clear in this case whether they have vested rights or not. If you pass this ordinance, then I think what the mayor's saying is, do you intend for it to apply to CRESS? for it to apply to CREs or not? Depending on whether or not you have the opinion that they have vested rights based on the extent that they have gone in the project.
So we won't make that...
Is that clear?
No, I think it's clear. I just want to make sure, and it doesn't have to get in the way of the vote. We have to do that separately, we can entertain that, but simply stated, I think we owe staff an answer because we don't want to be caught into this, you know, well, we passed it, but it doesn't really apply to that particular project.
Yeah, I'd like to discuss the ordinance and do that, and then discuss that later, because that's a separate issue as far as I'm concerned. I think we need to...
Well, why are we doing this? That's the only thing I would ask this question. I certainly, if, this is decision time for the council, okay? In just my elementary way of thinking, you know, the only reason that we're here tonight is talking about that development. I simply want to make sure, and I am open to a vote, positive or negative, on this particular ordinance. If you don't believe in this ordinance, then, and you think it puts us in a bad light in terms of development, I respect that. But the main reason that we're here to vote on this is because of CREs.
I don't think so. I think it's broader than that.
Well, I think the genesis of this is exactly as the mayor says, that it came about aimed at one particular business.
Yep.
And I think that we were looking for a silver bullet, and I'm afraid we're coming up with a fragmentation grenade. It's going to have an impact on a lot of other businesses other than the one that it was intended to stop. I'm not speaking in favor of the Walmart business, I'm just saying I'm concerned about the well-being of the business community in the city.
I'd like to speak to that because I started there, 100%, I started there, thinking this is to stop Walmart. And while I'm not a fan of Walmart, and I'm not a fan of big government, I think that particularly some of the speakers who spoke tonight made very good points in that we really didn't know it was a problem until the Walmart incident brought it to light. And whether this applies to Walmart or not, and that's why I said we should talk about that as a separate issue, whether this, if we adopt this or not, whether we apply it to Walmart, I think we need to, that's a separate issue for me. But I do think we owe it to our citizens to discuss protecting the traffic on Victory Boulevard and the amount of development we allow at the entrance to our city. I was not a fan of allowing the, whatever we just, is going to happen in the Big Woods on this side. You know, I voted no on that one, on selling that to begin with, but thinking that was too much traffic. And I think that any sort of business on the opposite side of the woods is going to, on the opposite side of the street, is going to bring a lot of traffic. So we need to be careful about what's built there. I don't know that I want the city, seven people being in charge of determining that, but I think it's worth discussing.
I agree with Ray, and I don't agree with this ordinance. You know, I think back of all the previous councils that have tried to develop the Big Woods to no avail, and we've hired professional people to tell us what's the highest and best use of the Big Woods, and we zoned the Big Woods based on their information, professional information that we trusted. We matched the zoning to it, we created an EDA so that they could make deals with developers that we don't, we cannot make, to make it easier for the developer. We told our planning department to sell this city, Pecosin is the place, bring your business here. And I think it's, this is sending a message not only to businesses that we don't want them, and we're not interested in them, but to our own staff. And we geared them up, told them, I'll look at this list of who's got to get a conditional use permit, and every one of us says, oh, I'd love to have one of those here. I'd love to have one of those. And I disagree with the fact that, yeah, nobody's going to develop all of that piece of land at one time. They can't, because it's owned by probably 100 different people. This is the only piece that's big enough to interest somebody with a big project. So a mom and pop may buy a piece in that big general commercial area, and now we're going to put this burden on them? It's just big government coming to this city, and I'm not for it.
Well, I want to make a comment there also. You heard my questions earlier about how much would this cost the business who wanted to go in there? And although this, according to some people, may have been brought up solely by Walmart, okay? The reason I seconded it and wanted it to come up was because I've heard what's been said by a lot of people, they would like to have businesses that have a significant impact on the city come up before a forum of people that were elected for and by the citizens of this city of Pecosin, okay? Being said, I'm sorry the name Walmart was brought up, because I do not feel that I have the right, okay? Matter of fact, I'm relatively certain I don't have the right, nor this council, to say which businesses can come to this city, okay? Which businesses can get competition and which businesses cannot get competition, nor do I want that right. I don't want to say who can build next door to me, whether I like them or not, whether they're my religion or not. I do not want those rights, okay? I do not want, I don't want this council to have those rights. My sole purpose for seconding this was to give the citizens an opportunity to have comment before a board of elected officials. And I'm concerned about the cost of business. We have a general, we have a mixed use of business. We're trying to get business in Pecosin, and Buddy's right on that. We've been trying to get businesses in this city for a long time, okay? Fortunately or unfortunately, that's the only business that's, right now, applied to spend their money to do that, so I'm, but I'm not going to make this about them, okay? The reason I seconded it was to give the citizens an opportunity to speak their opinions and to make certain that there are none, no unintended consequences of what we do. If a business of any kind was to come in and have a significant impact on the city that would require major changes to our water lines and major changes to our sewage systems, okay, that we simply can't afford, and there's no secondary access, then we might have to do something we didn't intend to in those cases. But I don't want to stop a mom and pop from being able to come in here and make it unaffordable to come to this city. And I've had people say, well, just raise my taxes. Well, I know a lot of people in this city that who are retired, a lot of people who just don't pay high-paying jobs, and they just can't afford to have their taxes raised, and nor do I want to run any of them out of the city because we're doing that, because we keep businesses from coming in. And so, I hate that that, that the last part of the vote was brought as part of this issue, okay? I think it would be good to have the opportunity for citizens to have input on significant impacts to the city, but I don't know about the other part.
It bothers me some that anybody that wants to bring a business in here from anywhere can get a few folks on the EDA to approve it and can do it without any elected public official body even looking at it. And if that's a roadblock, a hindrance, an obstruction, I think that it's okay to live with that.
But I've got to agree with you on that. What this has done to me, it's taken the voice away from the people. This is kind of putting the voice back to the people, as we've heard loud and clear, and putting it back to this board. The Walmart separate thing aside, I'm going to go for this ordinance having no bearing on the Walmart. As far as I'm concerned, the Walmart may happen, and that might take a whole different board of people, whether that's coming here or not. Might be seen and heard somewhere else. But I think this is going to, we don't have the infrastructure, when VDOT, when this road out here, the funding, that hurts that project, hurts any big project. And until we get the infrastructure, I personally don't think we can think too big out there. So this gives us an opportunity for us to have a say-so on it, and the citizens to have a say-so.
And it doesn't mean we're going to disapprove. It just means it's going to come before the elected body.
Okay, so I'm going to go back to the question that started the whole conversation, right?
Right, do that.
Okay. So, do we expect this to apply to CREs?
I don't think we can answer that right now.
But if we do the no second reading, it becomes effective in, what, 30 days? And then it'll apply however it does. And that's a chance I'm willing to risk if they want to bring a lawsuit.
Okay, so, I got one.
Are we voting?
No, no. No, I'm making sure, I'm making sure that staff knows, if the vote is positive, how to apply this. I'm assuming that, you know, we're going to, and I'll tell you what, I'll just state it, and y'all can tell me if you disagree with it.
Could we not receive legal counsel on this outside of this forum first?
I think we have. I think, I think he's already given you the legal counsel that you need.
He said they don't have a right. I've given each one of you a complete breakdown on what vested rights are.
All right.
Okay.
And I've discussed it with each one of you. I'm not going to sit here and make a decision in a public forum without all the facts...
Right, that's what I'm saying.
...as to whether or not that applies.
Right.
Okay? That's more than I'm smart enough to do.
Right.
So simply stated, is the intention that, y'all disagree with me, feel free, truly. The intention is, if this passes tonight, that we're going to enforce it on CREs.
That's what I, yeah, if this passes tonight, it becomes, it'll all in 30 days.
I don't know whether we're forcing it, I think we're calling their hand, and then they'll play their hand.
Correct.
I mean, you know, we're not dealing with some little fly-by-night outfit here, you know?
Yep.
I still say that this, this whole ordinance was aimed at Walmart.
There's no doubt.
I'm willing to bet if Trader Joe's was going to be the thing going there, people saying, hey, great, we need that here in town.
Hey, I'm not disagreeing with you, I'm just, I'm just stating the obvious. The elephant's in the room, so, you know, you may as well just talk about the elephant.
I think this got missed. This has been missed.
Yeah.
Somehow, in the comprehensive plan, or whatever happened, and this is just my opinion, this got missed. There's no way that you should have a group of people can dictate what the citizens want versus in the city council together. I just, just, again, that's my gut. I just think it got missed. I think now we're fixing it, and if the chips fall where they fall.
Well, in every zone, you've got by right, by right things that can be built. And general commercial has by right, they could build what they wanted to build.
Really, really, when I look at this list, I don't see what you can build in there, to be quite honest with you. When I look at this list, I'm sitting here going, well, that's pretty much everything. Yeah. So I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with any of the arguments. I hear what, I hear what Councilman Green says, and what Councilman Bernal says, and I agree with both of them. I also hear, I hear what y'all are saying as far as citizen input, you know, that's okay, got that, want that too. But simply stated, you're either going to, when we, when we do this, I intend to make sure the city manager enforces this on CREs. If you have, if you disagree with that, then what I'm saying is, now's your time to vote against it, okay? Because the direction is, we intend for them to enforce this on CREs, okay? That's, that's the only thing. I just want to make clear that staff hears it, it's recorded in the minutes, and that that's what we're going to do, that's what staff is going to do. That way, there's no ambiguity, there's no, the group out here is sitting here waiting for the next shoe to fall, okay? Just make your intention clear. All right. So I have a motion made and seconded.
I enforce it, you mean bring it before council?
Mm-hmm.
Or their decision?
Correct.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Okay. So, the motion is to pass the ordinance, not including the vehicle count, and to do it on the first reading and not the second.
Waive the second reading.
Waive the second reading.
Say, not including the vehicle count?
Not including the vehicle count. Okay? That's what, that's what's been made and approved.
Why do we not include the vehicle count? Did we not want to include the vehicle count?
I don't know what it means. You know, what's 75 per hour? Is that a lot, is that a little? I don't know.
Wasn't it a standard that was in other cities?
I have a motion made and seconded. You know, do we want, do you want to change your motion? Okay.
Not with the info I have now.
Okay.
Now, we could add it back in if we find something different in another meeting.
Anything else?
So there's no question, you are voting on the ordinance that's set forth in the book packet, and it does not include the suggested language from the...
That's correct, that's correct. And it waived the second reading.
Waive the second reading.
Judy, please.
Councilman Green.
No.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to one.
Now, I'm going to leave the agenda for a minute, and Dr. Toms, if you can do your presentation, I'm sorry for the traffic delays, you know, you probably had to come down Victory Boulevard, you know, it's really...
Actually, as an economist, I was very intrigued with a very active and smart citizenry in discussing those ideas. It needs to be discussed here.
Yes.
I left Hampton at 3:30 to arrive at a 5 o'clock meeting with the city manager of Virginia Beach, got there at 6:00. The infrastructure doesn't support what they're trying to do, and then it took me another hour and a half to get back. So I have spent three and a half hours on the road to do two 10-minute meetings, but it's very, very good to hear.
Thank you for, thank you for coming here again this evening, and we look forward to hearing from you.
And I'll be done very, very quickly. Lastly, I wanted to say, I am not a native Virginian, but I've heard so much about Pecosin, and I really love the way the small-town setting you have here, a lot of, and things that are very, very good to see and do, and your school system, so y'all be commended on what you do with that. The reason I'm here today is that I would like for the city council, who's always been a very, very big supporter of Hampton University and our cancer center, to support us one more time, and it's very simple. We're not asking the Commonwealth of Virginia for money out of the General Assembly. We're asking them for money out of the tobacco settlement funds. They have about $1.5 billion of funding, and most of that has been wasted and not have been used for the efficacy of helping folks with cancer. As you may or may not know now, cancer is the number, has the number-one mortality rate for Virginia, the only state in the, in the United States that has cancer, not heart disease, that's the number-one mortality rate. In addition to that, cancer is going to increase on average 36% over the next 10 years. The highest increases are going to be in cities like James County, Virginia Beach, Northern Virginia, because we're getting older. And you get older, you're going to have issues with, with cancer, and we are put in a position here of being able to use high technology to alleviate some of the pain and some of the discomfort. Some of the things we're doing now, we've seen over 1,200 patients, and it's getting bigger, and basically what we're doing that makes it uniquely different, of course, there's no harsh side effects from regular radiation or surgery. In addition to that, cancer can now be treated through what they call telemedicine, telehealth. So you don't have to go to a hospital, they can bring robotics down to you, and this is going to be especially helpful to veterans. As you know, our Hampton VA had one of the worst records of admitting patients and seeing patients, and actually, patients were dying with prostate cancer because they just couldn't get an appointment. And we think that we can help with that, and we're asking the governor and the tobacco commission to support us on that. The other issue in our General Assembly ask is for a weather satellite. A Pecosin resident, Pat McCormick, a former NASA employee, he and his colleague, Dr. Bill Smith, created a satellite 10 years ago. This satellite has the ability to predict the landfall of hurricanes within 100 miles 24 hours in advance, believe it or not. The technology was developed by Goddard and NASA and by the American Weather Service. Unfortunately, we sold that intellectual property to the Russians, the Chinese, and the Europeans, and they have satellites flying right now that is protecting their citizenry. Let me give you a good example of that. The last predicted storm... The last predicted storm that was supposed to come directly across and hit Hampton Roads. We continued to plan our activities because we knew that the hurricane was gonna be 300 miles out to sea, because we used that advanced technology. And what we're going to do, we're gonna place that satellite dish on top of one of our buildings in downtown Hampton, so the next hurricane season, we'll be able to use, the last time, remember, there was a European model, and there was the American model. The American model is that they take an airplane and fly it through the eye of the hurricane, then they throw canisters and balloons up in the sky. The European model that was designed from the technology advanced and, and created by Americans, use low-flying satellites to do all of those calculations using supercomputers. And that's the technology that we're gonna have. So next time, we won't say that the hurricane is gonna be from Florida to New, to New Jersey, it'll be within 100 miles, and you can predict it. The next step, and I, what we did too, we protested the selling of that technology, it was so god-awful, that we would allow that to happen as Americans, but we did. But that European satellite now is flying in Europe and over China, and they're able to predict not only that, but also the landing of tornadoes. So we want to bring that technology to Virginia, and it does two things. Number one, the, the good kids that you guys are preparing in your great schools need STEM jobs. And a meteorologist with that kind of technical education, with science background, will be able to get, get good jobs, and not like every last one of my kids, stay in this area and not leave. So there's a tremendous upkick on that as well. So what I wanted to do was, again, to tell you two things. Number one, we're not asking for any money from this, the Commonwealth, we're taking money from the tobacco settlement. And the other issue with regard to placing the satellite dish in Hampton, we're gonna do it whether or not the state gives us money or not. It's just too good of investment. It just saves so much money. I don't know how much your city council wasted money on doing all the precautions of thinking a hurricane was gonna come here, or leaving town, but we can get this technology in, it's developed by one of your own, Dr. McCormick. So, those are the two things that we're asking you to, to help us support. And again, you've been very, very good. We have lots of patients that are coming from Pecosin and from Tidewater, because Tidewater is one of the areas with the shipyard, with mesothelioma, with all those kinds of things, has one of the highest concentration of cancer death in the entire Commonwealth. We need to do something about that, we need to figure out what's going on, what's wrong with this, to make this happen. We'll think we'd do it. I think I have a short clip, is that-
It's loaded.
-ready to go? If we can do that, then I'll be done with you. But again, congratulations for aid involved citizenry, I really, really enjoyed listening to you there. So we'll listen to that. If anybody have any questions, I'll be around, I'll hang around later. Thank you so very much.
Thank you.
2013, my brother had prostate cancer. I found out really I had prostate cancer was in April of 2014. How you doing? My name is Lawrence Davis, I'm with the Hampton Roads Prostate Forum. If you have a cancer, Proton is the best way to get it taken care of. I in turn decided to go Proton. The VA told me they would not do that, wouldn't even pay the 20% that I need to pay for doing it under Medicare. It says Proton beam therapy has not been deemed as appropriate option. So his request has not been approved. After reading this letter here and looking at what Medicare has paid, for me being a, a retiree, I could not afford the extra cost of paying that extra 20%. And so, I raised hell back and forth about, no, I can't have this, I won't have it. This thing's gotta get out of me some kind of way or another.
Cancer strikes the old, the young, black, white, and what we're trying to do here at Hampton University Proton Therapy Institute is to have a place that gives those people hope. We treat all types of cancers, including GI, lung, head and neck, prostate-
For prostate cancer, patients treated with Proton beam radiation, the GI complication rate drops to one-half of 1%. And that is just a remarkable improvement over what we can achieve with our regular X-ray-based treatments, it's in fact a tenfold improvement, and we're very proud to be able to offer that for our patients.
There was no side effects, none. I was able to function in my job, it, it was the most unbelievable experience of my life.
Brain and spine, breast, and pediatric.
Derek starts coming through, and he sees the mohawk. The nurse points it out the first day, and taps on the glass, and's like, "Hey, look." And his face, he just lit up like Christmas, which made me light up like Christmas, and we're just so happy. It was so exciting, and just to share a connection with someone, and, and know that I can make someone's day a little better.
How do you feel?
Good.
How good?
Very good.
Clearly, Proton therapy eases human misery and saves lives.
That bell signifies the completion of a patient's fractionated course of radiation therapy. So they have been through usually anywhere from four to nine weeks of daily radiation therapy, and for them, ringing that bell means they are finished, they're completed, therapy moving on to the next phase, and hopefully cured their tumors.
Oh, that's the best part of the day, is when I hear the bell. We celebrate just as much as everyone out in the, out in the lobby.
We need a universal approach to funding, whether it be from private donations, whether it's from the state funding, whether it's from the federal government, in order for us to continue our mission of saving lives and easing human misery.
Joanne worked very hard for the Proton treatment center for the funding for it, because she thought it was very important to the community. She had breast cancer, it was diagnosed in 2005 or '06, and, you know, up in DC, and when she got out, it came out of the cancer treatment, out of the surgery and all, they said she was totally cancer-free. And then within a year, it came back, and it came back with avenges. I think she would probably say that there are some things that we could do without, and some things that we need to fund, but surely she would think that the Proton treatment center at Hampton University is, is one of those areas that need to be funded.
It's so important that we have options, other than just chemotherapy and surgery.
I was given only three options of treatment.
Cryogenics.
Prostatectomy.
I could have the seeds put in.
Or standard radiation.
Or I can do external radiation.
I said, "You've left one out." He said, "What's that?" I said, "Proton therapy." He said, "Well, there's not enough outcomes." Well, I knew there were outcomes. I had done enough research to know that they were outcomes.
The University of Florida published the results of a five-year prospective study that demonstrated a 99% freedom from PSA progression at five years for both low-risk and intermediate-risk prostate cancers.
These doctors, even though I questioned the ethics of it, were gonna direct me into their radiation program.
In the United States, we tend to try to keep our patients within the vertical tiers of hospital integration, which is a fancy word for saying the folks in one hospital system like to keep their patients all within that hospital system. I would hope that my physician would sit down with me and take off his brand, and take off his hospital association, and speak to me with the honesty of a physician, because that's really what I'm coming to him for.
There are many patients who cannot necessarily afford to get this treatment, so we have established a fund here through our gala to help to pay for those costs, out-of-pocket costs to those patients. In order for us to complete this mission, it helps us with giving funding and funding assistance to veterans like Mr. Lawrence Davis.
I had been praying for, there would be some kind of way that I can do this. I learned about Proton, and I learned about what Dr. Hawley was doing, because I like that guy. The Finance Department of the Proton Center, what they did, they went out and searched and found funds for me, and I found that the funds come from gals and different things that they give to help injured people. I'm just so excited that I'm, that I'm going forward with this. Say now, bring on hope. Yes, indeed.
Nonetheless, Mr. Mayor, thank you so very, very much for coming, letting us come back to you, and we always will keep Pecosin in our hearts. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for bringing all that up.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I'd just like to say something before Dr. Thomas leaves. I can personally attest to the greatness of Proton therapy, because I got to ring the bell. And before the Proton therapy at Hampton Institute was built, I had a prostatectomy, and thought everything was hunky-dory. But it came back. And I can tell you, the only side effect to the Proton therapy, and it, it's almost been a year now, and I'm, I'm sure they got it, the only side effect, the only inconvenience was I missed a few days of golf. But you can't, you can't help that. But I tell you, we can't, we could not support a better institution or a better thing. And what really breaks my heart is the article they had in the Daily Press, that they're not meeting the anticipated numbers, but I can tell you why, and I'll probably get in more trouble than I did for voting no against the amendment for saying this, but the local hospitals will not support it, because they've got their own little game. And they'd rather put you through radiation or some other treatment that's theirs, instead of going to this that is a known cure. And I, I can tell you, I met two people while I was there, and one lady was having, she had throat cancer. And I know a good friend of mine here in Pecosin died of that, he had the radiation, and he couldn't taste, he couldn't eat, he couldn't, he couldn't swallow half the time. I heard her tell the doctor when asked, when her therapy was over, they, she, they said, "Well, what's the worst side effect that you've got?" She said, "I've got a sore throat." So it is the greatest thing since sliced bread, I'm telling you. And thank you for being here.
No, no, thank you. And again, I want to really appreciate the city of Pecosin. Maybe 15 years ago, when they were thinking about developing the NIA, which they put in Hampton, we told them to forget about aerospace, because that wasn't the way to go. We told them that they should do green, the earth warming, global warming. And you guys had partnered with us to put that in Pecosin. If we had, the city had listened, the city, but NASA had listened to us, we would again been on the top edge of cutting technology, that would have been very, very beneficial. So, again, I just applaud you guys, and thank you so, so very much for being supportive, and we'll continue to do the best we can, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you for coming this evening. Several items of new business here. The second one is dealing with the legislative agenda of Hampton University, I'm, I'm sure that won't be an issue. But the first is approval of a conduit debt issuance for Beth Shalom, home of Virginia. And basically, just so everybody's aligned here, this is basically a pass-through debt, very similar to what we have done with YMCA in North County. I know that Randy's talked to each one of you back when, back when we did that, but basically, it's taken advantage of the EDA's deadline. But I've, obviously, we all are aware that the EDA's deadline is our deadline, so.
Let me, let me take a shot at that. It's at Hampton City, Teresa, would you let me take a shot at? All right. State law allows economic development authorities, the IDAs, duly constituted, to issue what they call conduit debt, up to $10 million per year. This, they are conduit for the debt, and this case would be our EDA with your consent of issuing the debt. It does not impact our credit rating, it does not impact our debt service, it does not impact our ability to borrow our debt, our debt caps of our own. The only thing that it does is it limits our ability to issue tax-free debt through the EDA for the balance of the calendar year, which is why we wait this late, because there is nothing that we're planning to borrow money for in the next 16 days. What this also does for the EDA is they make a small fee for being the conduit for this type of debt. There will, over the course of years, there will be projects, YMCA is an example, sometimes, particularly in, in a little larger-sized communities, sometimes you'll need other people to help you with their debt. And, and other communities, and in this particular instance, we were asked to, to assess for this conduit debt. And we have folks here that can answer additional questions, but essentially, it's, it's a conduit, it does no negative impact, even if the debt completely defaulted.
And we get a little money.
And the EDA gets a little bit of money.
And we also did it for a project in New Haven, didn't we?
We did.
Yes, sir.
Kevin White, Bond Counsel, is here too, in case you had any questions from Bond Counsel.
Well, we don't have any questions, but please come and tell us all about it.
I'll be very brief then. I just wanted to introduce myself, I'm Kevin White with Kaufman and Canold, so I'm representing Beth Shalom, home of Virginia, which is actually located up in Rico County outside of Richmond. They are looking, we're looking for a small, a qualified small issuer like Pecosin to issue bonds late in the year, as, as your city manager explained. And I'll emphasize again that there's no fiscal responsibility on the part of the city to pay any of the debt service, it's all pass-through, it's, you're more in the sense of a lender than a borrower on this sort of thing. The credit is coming from a commercial bank, so you are really passing that through to the borrower. But for that, you are permitted by law to charge a fee of 12 and a half basis points of the principal amount per year. That's pretty much it. Beth Shalom is a senior living facility up in and in Rico.
Hey, thank you very much. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution of the city council of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, regarding the issuance of a revenue and refunding bond by the Economic Development Authority of the city of Pecosin, Virginia, and the loan of the proceeds thereof to Beth Shalom, home of Virginia.
Second. Hey, motion made and seconded, we approve this conduit debt issuance. Questions or comments? Not Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. The next item is a resolution supporting the Hampton University's legislative agenda and priorities. Is there a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, I happily move that we adopt a resolution in support of Hampton University's legislative agenda and priorities.
I happily second.
Okay. And, okay, questions or comments? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Bernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, thank you very much. We hope to see you again, Dr. Thomas. Okay, next item under new business, an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2015 and 2016. I think we've had a chance to look at them, but I'll let you review them for the audience. If I could, ask our finance director, Teresa Owens, to come forward and present them, and then when she's done, I do have one or two separate comments to make.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, each year about this time after the audit is complete, staff come to council for the purpose of re-appropriating various carryover items that weren't previously spent, as well as some other restricted items that we've received since July 1st. The first part of the ordinance does just that, some of these things are donations that we've gotten in the library, fire fund, for-for-life money, asset forfeiture money. Also included in this are the additional revenues that we've gotten, some of those are, include the asset forfeiture money, we've gotten a couple of grants, the selective, selective grants, LMP grant, and a grant we received to purchase an airboat for the fire department. In addition, in the capital projects funds, there are appropriations that are unexpended for a pro, if, if they're appropriate- for a pro, if, if they're appropriations, if they're, if they're unexpended after three years, need to be re-appropriated into year one. And some of those included some drainage improvements, Kids Island, and then there was an appropriation for some large, for some facility projects, should they come up. In addition, one of the other things that's in here is the request from the school division to appropriate the unexpended funds from fiscal year 15. Dr. Parrish has asked that these funds be re-appropriated for the local match for security grant, as well as any other equipment for security reasons that are not covered under the grant. Then the last, the last three items have to do with unbudgeted needs that, that we've had, that weren't in the, in the 16 budget, that we weren't able to, to do last year. And some of those, and, one of the reasons that we are able to do this is because we had a slight increase in our unbudgeted revenues, and we also had vacancies in both the fire police department, public works. And then departments were really responsible in spending their, their budgeted numbers. So we ended up, at the end of fiscal year 15, with an unrestricted fund balance exceeding our 15% adopted policy of $947,000. Because of this, staff is recommending and requesting an appropriation of three one-time expenditures. The first being in the public works department. In the CIP, in the recommended CIP budget, there was a request for the purchase of a dump truck. But since that time, the public works director has determined that a street sweeper is a higher priority and is, and is bigger need at this time. So we're asking for $240,000 to be appropriated for the street sweeper. The next item is, has to do with VRS cost. One of the, one of the ways the state tried to help local governments through the recession was to allow the governing bodies to adopt what they call an alternate rate as opposed to the board-certified rate. The city decided to do that in order to help us through the recession. But it didn't alleviate the city from the liability. Therefore, we're asking through the fund, through the savings, through the vacancy savings that we have in fiscal year 15, to pay that difference off. And that was $112,000. Then the last one we are asking for is to fund a floating dock out at Rens Road. I understand there, there is a need over there for a floating dock for the sailing program and some other needs for the citizens of the city. With all that, as well as there's two additional appropriations later on in the agenda, if approved, as well as those approved, we'll have the fund balance in excess of the 15% will be about $427,000. Shall I answer any questions?
Any questions of Teresa?
Well, generally, it may not be for Teresa. Do we know where we're going to put the floating dock roughly?
Yes, sir. And Ms. Robb can speak to that.
Yes, we're.
Come forward. It's everybody else can hear you, please.
We're looking at the city dock at White House Cove, where we have the pump-out station now. We've got a preliminary RFP, or a draft RFP that we're finishing up now.
So county on the end of the city dock?
Decided.
Decided, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If I could, just a few comments. I won't go back over the entire list, but one of the things that, that we've tried to do as staff, and certainly you've done, is to, to bring us fully through the recession by adhering to strong financial principles. And one of the things that we're trying to do with the actions on your agenda this evening, you'll see with this, this funding identified in excess of the fund balance target, we're going back primarily priorities, dealing with obligations we already have. That's the VRS one. That needs to be paid. It, it already exists. The CIP, as you know, equipment replacement, you recall two years ago, we had an extensive work session on all of the various equipment replacement issues that all the departments had, including the schools. So investing in that, taking up from the adopted CIP and advancing the ball on that. And also, the other two items, I'll speak to them when we get to them. But one question that I've gotten from several folks is, what in the world do we need an airboat for? And I thought I'd just go ahead and answer that question if I could. The first time I ever thought about the need for an airboat, or a capacity, the airboat became the, a possible answer for it, was in 2009 during the twin nor'easter. That was my first storm here. And we had three and a half days where a large portion of the city had water over top of the red, particularly at night. We've been blessed in, in the emergency events that I've been here for, that we haven't had a large number of critical health issues that we just had to help folks with. But we do try, in emergency situations, to get in the inundation area, typically take that, that deuce and a half, which we promptly put in the ditch. Because at night, particularly, when the water's covered in the deep dishes, ditches that we have, there really is no practical and reliable way. And we're not talking about things other than sort of extreme health emergencies. I'm mindful, this is not some kind of thing we're just going to sort of tool around and see things are going. But it will give us a capability to get into the flooding inundation zones, whether that's two inches of water or two feet of water. And there are many other uses, but that was where it was in my mind as we debriefed the first study, because we clearly, we needed a better way than, than the deuce and a half, which was the only option we had at that time. And so it kind of sat in my brain as Joe Breeden, who was here on the back with the fire department, took the lead and was able to, to be the point person of the fire boat. At the same time, I said to Robert and to Joe, should you ever find an opportunity for a federal or a state grant for an airboat, if you think it's a good idea that's workable, give it a shot. And Joe was used to slaying large dragons and getting stuff done, and he found it. So this is a 100% grant that will pay for the acquisition and the training that goes with it. And I'm hopeful it will help us save lives that otherwise we couldn't, folks we couldn't get to.
Let me also remind you that you floated a fire truck.
Yes, sir. That was prior to my arrival, but yes, we did do that, and fire trucks do float.
Which do fire trucks do float? I'm surprised I didn't make the list. But, no, but, no, I think it's, I mean, what can you say when it's, when it's a grant? Okay, so thank you very much, Joe, for, for basically sponsoring and writing that grant. And I think it will be, it will definitely be a great tool for us.
Just one question, if I could. Having taken several rides on Jamie Morris' airboat and talking to him, I think it requires quite an extensive training process to learn how to operate one of these.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
And there aren't many places where you learn to do that. Will this grant cover our cost to get whoever's going to operate this to Florida to learn how to operate it?
Actually, I asked him this question.
And can I go with you?
As far as the grant goes, between the grant funds and some other funds that we have for training already established, basically what would happen would be the company that we've spoken with would actually come here and do the training.
Oh, good.
Actually, it's the same company that Mr. Moore used.
Right.
The, the lead instructor for that company is actually familiar with the area that we are dealing with. In addition to that, it is Department of Interior-approved course, which will help us in the long run if we ever are faced with having to go on the marsh or whatever the case may be. Again, just like the city manager said, this is not something that we're looking at to go out and ride around with. This is a tool to be used for life safety. However, we also want to keep in mind that we, we may come in contact with the marsh grasses and stuff, and we're very particular about that, and we want to be by the book, so.
Good. Very good. All right, any other questions?
I have one. Where do we go to gray shirts?
This is for lieutenants.
That's fancy.
This is fancy.
Fancy.
Hey, thanks, Joe. All right, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2015 and 16.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, my only comment is, it's great to be running a city that comes in well under its budget, has extra money, that it can do these necessary things, that has a credit rating that allows us to do conduit bonds for other people. I think back in the, back in the days of, you know, we're really looking for, for money and we, we've got to have businesses, and some of that gets overlooked. Great job to you, Randy, and to Teresa, because I know you, every check that she writes, it gets, gets questioned. And I'd hate to be the one has to come looking for 100 bucks to, to do something. And she makes me monitor my mayor's account when I go to the seafood festival. If I'm over by a dollar, it's not pretty. Okay? So, so with that being said, thank you to staff for the ability to do things like this. All right. Now Judy?
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next one is an ordinance appropriating funds for the award of a contract for construction of a breakwater at Messick Point, and an ordinance appropriating the necessary funding.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, recognize our city engineer, Ellen Roberts, who had a short presentation on this for us.
Good evening. Tonight, for your consideration, are two resolutions. One, authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Carolina Marine Structures, the low bidder on the Messick Point breakwater bid. The other is a resolution appropriating an additional $53,500 for the project. We had bids, we received five bids on November 23rd, ranging from $192,000 to $311,000. Carolina Marine Structures was the apparent low bidder, and we have gone through their bid and, and double-checked their references and their work history. The breakwaters are intended to protect the city infrastructure, specifically the boat ramps and the dock assembly down at Messick Point. And they have been on, the, the project has been in the process for a number of years. $112,500 of the project is being funded by a Virginia Port Authority grant, a ports grant, and that was awarded to the city on May 20th. So, any questions or?
So it's a combination of grant funding and local funding?
Yes.
Only wish Banks Holloway was here to, to be a part of this vote, because this was something he championed for many, many years. So is there a motion to approve this?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Carolina Marine Structures Incorporated for engineering and construction services for the aid to ports grant for the construction and installation of two breakwaters off Messick Point.
Second. Motion made, and second, any questions or comments?
We know what a timeline is for the actual construction.
Yes. If we award the contract by the end of December at the latest, we have, the contractor has 90 days to reach substantial completion, which puts them mid to the end of March, and 120 days to final completion, which puts the project end mid-April to the end of April.
Great, thank you. Perfect.
That's great.
Good. Anything else? Not Judy, please?
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Okay, the next item under new business is?
We've got to do, we've got to do the ordinance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
The mayor moves that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year 2015 and 16.
Second. Okay, motion made, and second, questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
The reason I missed the other one, I was sitting here going, are we really going to do something for the assessor? I mean, the next item on, the next item on the agenda here is an ordinance appropriating funds for assessor, no, for assessment software. Sir, come right on up and tell us your needs.
As, as Mr. Faze in the city of Assessor walks forward, before he starts, I just want to tell you that one of, I would say, when, when you're the new city manager, everybody tells you everything real fast. And, and in this particular case, one of the first things I learned about was the need to update and replace this assessment software program, which, I don't want to steal anybody's thunder, but I will say this, because he won't. Through the, through his good work, and his office's good work, and all the people that support them, we managed to, to take this two assessment cycles longer than I thought was possible. But there is an end to our good luck, and we are the only client left on this. And is it 2000 or 2003?
2003.
It's, it's prepared on a 2003 piece of software. And I think it's time, given the, the relatively long lead time for conversion, that we get about it, and so.
So we gave you a computer?
They paying us to upgrade?
They gave you, no. Do we have to get him a new computer also to run this, or?
We'll have to get rid of the abacus. A 2004 version of computer, probably. Mr. Faze?
Thank you, Randy. Members of council, mayor, appreciate y'all allowing me to come here tonight to make a formal request for the replacement of our assessment software. As Randy mentioned, the current software we're using is called Equity, and it's based on an access database 2003. And there's only one person who maintains this software, and we are the last contractor now using this software. And that individual only works on our stuff on a part-time basis. So if our system was to go down, we'd be in a heck of a mess. But, but the software has worked very well for us over the years and so forth, but like all things, it's come to its useful end. So at any rate, what, and the other thing too is, is that this, the software we're using now is not, it's not connected to our GIS system, it's not connected to our sales database, the sketch program, photo program, none of that. I integrate all of that stuff manually and send those updates up to our GIS vendor each, each month. So it's pretty archaic, the way that I'm doing it, but I'm making it work. But at any rate, so I've done a little bit of checking around over the years, because I knew that we were going to be faced with this at some point in time. And most of the figures that I come up with, and there's not many companies out there that build a software package for small localities, but most of the ones that I've checked into, we're looking in the ballpark of about $125,000. And that's including the data conversion and everything. I know that sounds pretty pricey, but when, with all the tie-ins and stuff that's involved with it, it's, it really pays for itself in the, in the long run. I provide y'all with a recommended timeline for applying the software and moving forward. And unfortunately, at this late of the stage, I don't see that, how we could make, we could purchase a software package and, and make it work for the next fiscal reassessment. But I think that we really need to start moving forward on that so that we can make it, make all of the changes that are necessary for the FY '20 reassessment. So with y'all's approval, I'd like to move ahead with that.
Yes.
Are there any questions?
Is there any chance at all that you could get it ready for the '18 assessment?
Uh, not likely. Not likely, because, you know, I think we have to put it out for bid and everything, and when you go through all of that process, and you research the different companies, and they come in and they, you know, demo it and everything else, and by the time we go through the whole procurement process and everything, I think that we're going to be into late summer and trying to install the software right when I'm getting to the meat and bones of the next reassessment. And I'm only the appraiser for the whole city, so, you know, there's just no way that I could properly, I think, do the next reassessment to the standards that the city's been used to in trying to, you know, start with a new program. Okay? Any other questions?
Nope. Hey, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you for making that software pay off for so long, it's 12 years on software, that's pretty good.
Amazing.
Amazing. Is there a motion?
The mayor, I move that we adopt an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfer to fiscal year 2015 to '16.
Second. Motion made, second, that we approve this and the ordinance appropriating funds for assessment software. Questions or comments? Seeing none, Judy, please.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Last item under new business is a resolution canceling the second meeting of the month of December. Is there a motion?
The mayor, I move that we adopt a resolution canceling the second meeting of the month of December 2015.
Second, before you even got it out. Judy, please, I'm not even asking him for questions.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Ayer.
Aye.
Councilman Southall.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Vernal.
Aye.
Councilman Green.
Aye.
And Mayor Hunt.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of seven to zero.
Comments to the city manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, just a few things this evening. One, I forgot to do this last time, so I'm going to do it first. I just wanted to express thanks to Mrs. Crawford for working with us on the remote participation policy test. We, a lot of people worked on that, make sure that we could do that pursuant to your recently approved policies, and it worked. So thank you, and thank everybody that made that work, Bob, Teresa, folks from the schools as well. Only one other item. Council members may have seen, a couple of weekends ago, across Virginia, it was Freedom of Information Act article time, editorials and newspaper stories, and there was one that ran in local paper here, and it spoke to an issue in precaution of certain FOIA requests. And I just wanted to provide a little additional background to you all that wasn't real clear in the article. Part of it was there, if you really searched for it, but the way they do this, in Press Association, Daily Press took the lead this time, but it moves around, they'll go and they make a series of requests on local government school divisions, and to see what happens, to test the system, and that's a good thing. And we were subject to city precaution three tests, and one of them got a little additional press. And essentially, I just wanted to highlight for you and for the community, the issue was, a person came in and made a request with a certain record at the police department. The request was vague. The person that received that request processed it based on her understanding, and asked the requestor for his contact information, which I think was interpreted by the requestor as being something other than what it was, which, and if you'll just give me a second, you'll understand what it is in a second. Anytime that someone makes a FOIA request, we hope that the person who's at the counter or the first person to touch the issue with them can help them. But always, the request goes, as soon as it can, as a follow-up to the department head. In this particular case, the police chief, when he was made aware of the request, almost immediately thereafter, determined there was sufficient vagueness in the request for a follow-up, which he did again that same day, ascertained exactly what it was that the person was asking for, and made an appropriate response within one business day of the request. The Virginia gives us five days, we did it in one day. Our protocol of making sure requests go up to the department head worked exactly as we intended, which is to make sure, he was not sure based on the vagueness of the request, immediately followed up, and it went exactly like it should go in that sequence. And I'm not sure that that truly came out in the article, and so I thought it was appropriate, particularly following a conversation with Mrs. Crawford, who I, she called to say, do you see this? I said, yes, absolutely, the police chief and I had just talked about it. And she goes, you know, there's more to the story, and we need to talk about that. So, chief, I hope I got all the salient points correct, and I thank you for being here, in case any member of the council has questions. But we get FOIA requests all the time, and that's okay, that's a good thing, and we don't mind, but we're not perfect, and that's why we have a redundancy protocol, which says, after you've dealt with somebody, you make sure your department head knows, and he or she will ask for changes if anything else required or questions that should be asked. And it worked exactly like it was supposed to in this instance. And chief, you want to add anything?
All the chiefs that were involved across Virginia clearly understand that the testing process can be a necessary part of ensuring compliance with the law, and we certainly have no problem with that. But the person who made the request knew what he wanted and was intentionally vague, so we can hypothetically talk about what might have happened had that been a citizen who didn't know what they want. So to address that issue, we sat down, well, even before I got contacted by the member of the press, and clarified with that clerk what those responsibilities are, but because our system requires them to bring that to me, it was properly responded to. But I think it's important to know that we are about being open in how we function and making records available that we're required to make, you know, available, and have a disposition to disclose records that the public has a right to have. So we think that's important. But I think it's the first time we've had a request for that type of information. No citizens ever asked for it. So the test was particularly challenging because our full-time administrative assistant's out of town dealing with a sick mother and one of our part-timers handling it. So we've taken care of that and given her some guidance on how to handle those in the future, make it more clear. But because it was intentionally vague, even though the person knew what they wanted, they didn't want to clarify that, they wanted, they were testing her knowledge. But if you read the article, it appears that we did not respond, and that is totally untrue. We responded, I wrote the letter that day, just didn't mail it to the next morning, and properly responded within the Code of Virginia, quoting from the Code of Virginia, and exactly what I'm required to by law. So we handled this pretty well, and we've never had any issues with that, so. But if we can be better and be more user-friendly, we'll aim for that, so. But again, it was a good opportunity, and the testing is important, and we understand why they do it, but we just don't want to get caught up in hypotheticals. What we want to get caught up in is making sure that the folks who deal with the public have the best information and the most information they need to determine what's being asked, and that the requests are properly followed.
Thanks, chief. Appreciate it.
Thanks.
And I did contact the newspaper reporter to clarify that and request that they updated their chart to reflect that, because I, the reason I called you was, I saw the title of the article, and my husband said something about FOIA, and I said, oh, you don't need to read that, I'm sure precaution got 100 percent. I knew we would be okay, because I know how we operate, and I knew, you know, we don't hide anything here, and we help our, of course, we help our people. And then I read the article and went, oh, no, they said, we didn't do some, you know, we were, it wasn't exactly, you know, it didn't go well. And so that was when I looked into things and thought, well, they need to clarify this, because the way it was written was not exactly written in the best light for us, so. Thank you for that, and, you know, errors happen, so.
Anything else, Randy?
Well, I have, sir, thank you.
Okay.
Councilman Southall. I'd like to welcome a new city employee, Ted, good jury, and thank our city staff for doing such a fine job of preparation for the meeting tonight, and Joe Breeden for his excellence in grant writing, yeah, he's done a couple of good things for the city, and our city manager for being, having the forethought to even consider that, so, thank you very much.
Councilwoman Crawford?
Yes, the and other stuff that our people who work here do, there is a lot of and others, so I thank all of you who work for the city for the and other stuff that you do. I also wanted to, will echo your comments and thank all the citizens who came up and spoke, I appreciate your input, it is helpful in making decisions. I hate, I personally detest conditional use permits. I don't like the process, I don't like having to make decisions individually. It's so much easier to have a black and white law, follow this law, rather than having to do something, well, how about this for this business and this for that business? But sometimes, we need to, you need to factor in, certain areas have special rules, and in this case, I think we've made the right decision for that particular area of Victory Boulevard, given where we are and what we know now. And it was not directed at Walmart, you know, I know it may look that way, but the fact that it was starting to be developed did bring to our attention, we need to do something to just kind of monitor and have some input into what happens there. Finally, I know this because my youngest son was involved, but the high school drama team ended up advancing and winning the VHSL 3A one-act play state championship. One of the actors in the ensemble especially needs to be named, Cole Mercado, was actually awarded a Best Actor Award at the state level. He was recognized for his acting all the way up through all the, I think there were four different competitions they had to win, either come in first or second place to get all the way there, and they kept coming in second in all the competitions, and then they ended up winning first prize at the, in Charlottesville, when they went this past week, which, it was a very big surprise. They arrived in a rented minivan to get there in Charlottesville, and they went up against some of these drama teams that were coming in two charter buses full of many adults and props and lots of money and, you know, huge programs, and our, you know, five little people on stage took the whole thing, so it was very impressive. So congratulations to them.
And so Judy, would you make sure they come and we'll congratulate them, the state championship, a state championship, so. All right? So, like to see them here and congratulate them.